City Council Regular Meeting. And is Pastor Jackson here today? Pastor Jackson, would you like to lead us in invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, we come in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, and honor and thanksgiving, Lord. We're asking you, Lord, for your mighty hand upon our city Baldwin Park, Father. Asking you touching the city council, the mayor. And we're asking you, Lord God, giving them wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to govern the city, Lord. Many plans in a man's heart, but only that that you have established will stand. We're asking you touching our schools, Father. Touching our children, Lord God, leading, guiding them in the right direction, Lord. Breaking the problems with gangs, breaking the problems with drugs, Lord. Leading them, Father God, where they are able to live a productive citizen life in this city or wherever you plant them when they grow up. Our businesses, Lord, need your hand, Lord, that it will grow and prosper even during this time of pandemic, Lord. We're asking you, Lord, many people have been affected by this pandemic and sickness and death, Lord. But we are great and we can overcome all. We're asking you, Lord God, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, to put your mighty hand up on this city. Our police department, our first responders that are touching the lives of many when there's a call, they are the first one there. So we thank you, Lord, in the name of Christ, we pray, amen.
Captain Hoffer, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. City Clerk, can you do roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem, Alejandra Avila. And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here, thank you for that. City Attorney, I believe we have not closed our, we are not done with closed session, but is there anything to report out?
There's nothing to report out at this time, and we will go back into closed session at the end of your open session, Mayor.
Thank you. And so at this moment, I will make the announcement. The city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. At this moment, we do not have any proclamations, commendations, or presentations, so I will move to open the public communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes. We have one individual who requested to speak via phone. Her name is Danielle Ladner Peretz. And she is calling in regards to item number nine. And she's from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles.
As to item nine. The association is strongly opposed to rent control and to the proposed amendment, which would be detrimental to the city's rental housing. We urge the city council to reject the proposed ordinance. First, I would like to raise concerns relative to the lack of sufficient notice and transparency. While the agenda was closed last week with the proposed amendment, the ordinance itself, which does not entirely align with what was noted in the staff report, was only made available on the city's website, not part of the agenda itself some time yesterday. Moreover, during the last study session that just concluded, additional amendments were raised. A vital part of the legislative process is meaningful stakeholder engagement. This essential stakeholder engagement simply has not occurred. Due to the pandemic and the government mandates, for 18 months, many small business housing providers have received little if any rent, depleted their savings to cover living and building operating expenses, with many now contemplating selling their property and other chasing foreclosure. Simultaneously, housing providers are experiencing tremendous increases in operational costs, which continue progressively escalate. We are also in a high inflationary period with prices increasing at an accelerated rate. The proposed rent increase formula and the expansion of the RSO's applicability to overoccupied buildings of no more than three units will result in mob and pop owners that are providing much of the city's affordable housing and are struggling to remain in business to sell their properties, which will further exacerbate the housing shortage and result in the loss of desperately needed affordable housing. In addition to these monumental revenue losses, the proposed reductions in allowable increases will result in housing providers having no funds to rehabilitate their buildings while struggling to simply maintain that. The grim reality will be a city of aging and deteriorating rental housing. Government has a responsibility to pursue equitable solutions that serve the needs of all its constituents. The proposed ordinance will have dire long-term consequences on housing providers and the renters that the city seeks to support. The choices that you make...
Thank you, Mayor. That is the only telephone call-in speaker. Next, we have Bill Ru, who is in the audience. Government Affairs Director for Citrus Valley Association of Realtors. He will be speaking on item number nine.
Yes, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I'm Bill Ru, Government Affairs Director for the Citrus Valley Association of Realtors. We are a real estate association that covers most of the San Gabriel Valley and a portion of the western end of San Bernardino County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you know, California does have a statewide rent control ordinance, SB 1482, and we're the only state that has a rent control ordinance statewide. In looking at the rent control ordinances, there are some cities that have them. Most are following the state ordinance. It should be known that the Costa-Hawkins Act of 1995 is very clear that rent control does not apply to single-family homes. That's been the law. If you look at, excuse me, I'm sorry. If you look at AB 1482, the legislature also exempted single-family homes, townhomes, and condominiums, except when they're owned by a corporate entity or trust. When you look at rent control, the legislature was clear, they put in a 5% a year increase. It can only be increased by 5% and a CPI. So if the CPI is 2%, you can raise it 5% and another 2. You can go no more than 10% total, including the CPI. They did this for a very specific reason. They did this because it's expensive in many areas. You have maintenance. Somebody has to maintain this building. You have property taxes, you have insurance. All of this has to be considered. Those things go up, and if an owner does not have the return to cover that, they may sell that unit. So now that's an affordable housing unit that's off the market. They may, if they can't pay the mortgage, go into default. The bank's not going to let the tenants live there. You need to consider very clearly some of those costs, and that many of these are families. Many of the rentals in Baldwin Park are owned by families who are simply trying to have something for their retirement. I'm more than happy to sit and meet with you, as we've done in the past with other issues, and I look forward to the ability to bring you some more facts later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Lozier. She will be providing library updates.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, community partners, and fellow committee members. I wanted to give some library updates. Right now, at the library, we have some kits for teens. We have an Adult 101 Program series at the library, teaching teens adult skills that will help them in life. Right now, we have, it's called Starting Saving Your Money Kit. It involves a piggy bank that they can decorate, and then tips on how they could begin a savings account. And those will be available while supplies last. And then we also have a series of programs for adults, some virtual program series. With the holiday shopping season coming up, we have a program tomorrow at 11:00 for learning how to be a more empowered consumer. It teaches you how to research products, compare prices, how to spot fake reviews, and then how to protect yourself if there are unfair business practices, if somebody tries to scam you. We also have a costume designer teaching her career path. Her name is Derica Cole Washington, and she was one of the costumers on the movie Selma, as well as some Netflix series. And she'll be talking about her role, how she made it through the industry, as well as different roles that you could have as a costume designer. We also have two programs for our Work Ready Series for adults, for those who are seeking jobs, as well as those who are just looking to improve their job skills. One is Workplace Communication, teaching you how to better communicate, especially in this digital world, and that will take place on Tuesday, November 23rd. And then we also have a program on November 30th with job coach Liz Mulher, who will be teaching you public speaking. So anybody interested in improving their work skills or just wanting to take some library courses can see lacountylibrary.org for more information, or stop in and see us at the Baldwin Park Library. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next is going to be Beatriz. She's going to speak on item number nine, and we're happy to announce that we have an interpreter. She will need an interpreter. Our interpreter is here in person. His name is Luis Araoz.
Buenas noches, Mayor, and members of the Consejo de Baldwin Park. Mi nombre es Beatriz. Soy residente de la ciudad de Baldwin Park. Soy un inquilino. También soy un líder en mi comunidad y pertenezco a la organización de LA Voice y a la iglesia de San Juan Bautista en el Consejo Pastoral.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem. My name is Beatriz, and I'm a resident in the city of Baldwin Park. I'm also a tenant and a community leader. I work with LA Voice and also with Church San Juan Bautista.
Me gustaría resaltar un comentario que hizo la supervisora Chela Cruz cuando establecieron y estaban estudiando poner rent control en el condado de Los Ángeles, y esto fue lo que ella mencionó. La vivienda es para vivir en ella, no para hacer negocio. Tenemos miles de familias viviendo en carros, en calles, porque su ingreso no les permite rentar una vivienda a tan costo como ya está.
I'd like to quote Chela Cruz, who is, in regards to studying this situation with rent control. This is what she says. Resident is to provide habitat to someone, not to make money. Thousands of people are living with their families on the streets and in cars because the income they have is not sufficient to afford the payment of rent.
Pero también quiero mencionar uno de los casos que viene a mi atención de las familias de la iglesia de San Juan Bautista. Esta familia durante la pandemia, ellos rentan una casa, y durante la pandemia incrementaron el costo de su vivienda a 200 dólares. Sin más argumentos, la señora, la dueña de esta propiedad, que no nada más tiene esta propiedad, tiene otra propiedad enseguida, y no sé si está registrada como un landlord, dijo que porque regresó su hija de la escuela, o está rentando la vivienda una familia, o se la está rentando por persona. Esa es una pregunta para esta señora que renta casas.
I would like to mention the situation of one family that I was able to see at the Church San Juan Bautista. There is this lady who's renting a house and who has suffered an increment in rent in $200, and I don't know if there's an additional argument in regards to this or not, but I don't know if she just owns that property and also the property next door. She says that when her daughter came back...
She increased the rent. Ella aumentó la, vino atrás de la escuela.
She came back from school and the increment of rent.
Me gustaría, escuché los comentarios de la concejal García, y me gustaría invitarla a que cuando haga sus comentarios los haga basado en facts. No veo cómo esta póliza va a afectar a los dueños de casas que están viviendo en sus casas. Esto va a rentar a las personas, va a afectar a aquellas personas en una manera positiva, que establecen su precio, que puedan quedarse en su casa, consideren esa casa como su hogar, y eso les va a dar un sentido de comunidad. Va a arreglar muchos problemas sociales que tenemos porque no tenemos ese sentido de comunidad, que necesitamos engrandecer en nuestra comunidad.
This will affect the people who will remain in their homes positively. They will be able to stay home, and they will be able to live in a home, and this will not only have a positive social consequence, but also in the sense of community, for the community.
Hablando de nuestras personas adultas mayores, ellos van a tener la posibilidad, por lo menos, de mantenerse en una casa. Su ingreso no pasa más de 1,000 dólares al mes de su retiro. ¿Cómo van a poder rentar una casa que en Baldwin Park cuesta más de 3,000 dólares la renta?
About the other citizens, this will help them because these people will be able to afford a rent for $1,000 and not $3,000. How can a rent be $3,000 in the city of Baldwin Park?
Los urgo a ustedes que hagan una decisión con carácter moral y no un interés personal para ganar sus próximas campañas. Eso es muy importante que tengan en mente al tomar una decisión.
I urge you all to think of the community when making a decision, and not to think only on how to win the next election when you're putting together your campaigns for the elections.
Thank you.
And moral values, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next is Mario Maciel. He will be speaking on item number nine, rent control.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Mario Maciel, current Planning Commissioner. I've come up here to speak on behalf of item number nine, which I'm very proud of you guys putting something together, because this actually is moving in the right direction of making me feel, as a resident of Baldwin Park, like I'm being protected. I live in a single-family home, and as I've expressed my story to you guys before, it's not easy. I've given my story before, but I'll share it once again. Living in a house, my family's, I have a family of six. Renting a house for $1,600, I thought that was decent enough. We get kicked out, and now my rent's $2,200. It was a big jump, but I was, thanks to God, I was able to manage and still happen to manage to stay afloat. Anything above that, I think, would jeopardize a lot of things in our life, and I think that's what a lot of people are experiencing nowadays. My neighbor across the street, same thing, his rent's going up 11%, and I think it's unjust. I think it's unjust for people to come in here, buy properties, and the only reason why they're buying it was to make an investment out of them, which I understand, but when it comes to displacing our people from Baldwin Park, that hurts, and that's something that you guys need to look at and see that we're being displaced slowly but surely. This place is becoming gentified. There's no way of stopping it. It's going to happen. Corporate America's taking over. It's going to happen. I want to thank you guys for putting something together, and I hope that you guys see that this is the right direction to go and move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matt Buck. He will speak on item number nine. He's the Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Matthew Buck, like she said, Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association. I urge you to oppose item number nine. Baldwin Park's rent control ordinance remains a counterproductive housing strategy, which is making the housing crisis worse. The California Apartment Association represents local housing providers, operators, suppliers, along with business owners and real estate industry experts who are involved with a range of rental properties from those that offer single-family residents to larger apartment communities. Our members provide a majority of the affordable housing throughout LA County. The city's allowable rent increase is already the most restrictive in California. Measured inflation in the area is approaching 5.5%. This new effort will put housing providers at an even higher risk of failing, of falling victim to costs that rise independent of CPI, and they make it impossible to keep up with rising costs. Rental owners are struggling to pay their property taxes. Where was I at? They're struggling, they're being forced to sell their properties across the board due to the emergency restrictions and the city's draconian rent control policies. Unfortunately, these are the affordable units you desperately need to house the people standing behind me that are in your city. They provide the affordable units. You have to partner with them to find out a better way. Okay? I mean that from my heart. Okay? I know I represent the California Apartment Association, but I do this for a living to help the people sitting behind me, because these laws have effects that you can't reverse. Okay? And you guys have had this for a couple of years. I'm asking you, really think about what you're doing before you move forward. You got to get rid of this law. It's going to be a lot worse. And you want to talk about all the things? I've been doing this a long time. We're the experts up and down the state. Just tread very carefully, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Gonzalez, he will also be speaking on item number nine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Jared Gonzalez. I represent Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association, WMA. WMA is a statewide nonprofit trade association that represents mobile home park owners and operators throughout California. The proposed change to include mobile home parks to the city's rent control ordinance is not warranted and would create unintended negative consequences for residents, park owners, and the city. The fact is, there is no evidence of widespread mobile home park rent increase issues in Baldwin Park. Baldwin Park mobile home parks are mom-and-pop parks whose rent increases have been reasonable. Evictions are extremely rare, and for those who fall on hard times and have trouble paying rent, these park owners work with them in a collaborative and compassionate manner until they get back on their feet. What is on the agenda tonight appears to be a fast-moving blanket solution to a problem that does not exist for mobile home parks. A rent control ordinance is an onerous policy that would serve as a punishment for being good owners. Rent control is costly. It would all but guarantee park owners increase rent every single year to the maximum allowable rent because of lack of flexibility. It would force park owners to reconsider investing in park improvements, and it would divide communities and create unnecessary resident versus park owner tension. WMA and its members asked the council to vote no or to press pause on this issue, and instead reach out to all stakeholders, including park owners, which according to the staff report was supposed to have been done before this item was taken up. There ought to be candid stakeholder conversations first versus a rush to an expensive, one-size-fits-all ordinance that would bring harm to what's been working. Do not punish good park owners for doing the right thing and providing an affordable home ownership solution for many of your citizens. On behalf of the industry and park owners, I am happy to coordinate mobile home park owners and operators as soon as possible to have meaningful discussions with city officials to discuss their concerns and answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Javier Reynosa. He will be speaking on item number nine.
Good evening. My name is Javier Reynosa. I'm the manager from Holiday Lodge Mobile Home Park. I'm here just to, I will be fast. Our rent is no more of the $907 per month in our people that live in the homes. Idea comparable for another cities around Baldwin Park, and our rent is very low compared to another cities. I'm here to, just to tell you that the rent increase, that would be a punishment to the ownership of the mobile home parks. I think it's, it will damage the parks. I think, I believe that when we have situations in the mobile home park, when the rent is low, we can do more work and better, to have our community in better position for the people that lives in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jose Calindo, will also speak on item number nine.
I'm sorry, but to all the speakers, we request that you keep your mask on when you're speaking on the microphone. Thank you so much.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jose Calindo. I'm the manager for Fountain Blue Mobile Park. Our average rent right now is $893. I called around a couple apartment buildings around Baldwin Park, and the rents are way more than what we charge, which is like Violin Apartments, $1,850, Casa Moreno, $1,600, Torrey Pines, $2,600, El Monte Apartments, $1,650. So we're pretty low, so I don't think rent control is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Leong. He will also speak on item number nine. Excuse me.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Brian Long. Fountain Blue Mobile Home Park and Holiday Lodge Mobile Home Park has been in the ownership, management, and operation of my family since the 1970s. We are the definition of a family business, not a nameless, faceless investment trust. I respectfully urge members of this council to vote no on the ordinance as it applies to mobile home parks. Mobile home parks, we understand, is considered as a low-income housing vehicle, and we acknowledge that concept. We understand our demographic. We relate to our tenants, and we believe that we have treated them fairly. Our average rents, as you heard, is about $900. We have a tenant from 1987 whose rent is $712. We have another tenant from 1970... We have another tenant from nineteen-seventy-eight. His rent is seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Our rents are considerably less than apartments in Baldwin Park, much, much less than comparable mobile home parks in the vicinity of Baldwin Park. Our rent increases over the last ten years have averaged two-point-nine-nine percent, two-point-nine-nine percent. During my time involved with managing these parks, we have had no evictions based on non-payment or inability to pay rents, none. We believe that we have been exceptionally fair to our tenants. You recall back in two thousand and eight, we had the economic recession. In two thousand and ten, you may also recall that in San Bruno, PG&E suffered that enormous gas pipeline explosion. In two thousand and eleven, we took it upon ourselves to pay out of pocket to change out our gas lines, our water lines, our electric lines. Out of our own pocket, we paid nearly two million dollars. We never wanted our tenants to pay a dime of it. During that year, our rent increases three-point-three percent. We believe that rent control is unnecessary. We understand that the rent control ordinance as applied to mobile home parks floating the idea around of a maximum of three percent or a percentage of CPI. We understand right now, in September, the CPI was four-point-six percent. We understand that in October, the CPIU was five-point-four percent. Would it be fair for the mom-and-pop donut shop to limit their donut sales to from one dollar to one dollar and three cents? I don't believe so. I don't believe that's American. I don't believe that's following in the way that we do business here. So I respectfully request that the members of council vote no on this ordinance as it applies to mobile home parks.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Arturo Luna.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. This document, or whatever you guys call it, this is trash. Did the city send this out, or did somebody just dream of this? I'm not a lawyer, but if I had to take this to court, and if I was a judge, I'd trash it. You want people to read your information? Put your letterhead on it. I mean, how hard is that? And you don't want nobody to read it, or do you want us to read it? Number two, have you people seen our city falling apart? Well, number one, how much money have we made off the vendors? I don't care if they're street vendors, corner vendors, or walk down the street at eight, nine o'clock at night selling snow cones, ice cream, and all this other stuff. These people do this free, or are we collecting any money? We have a code enforcement agency in this, in this city. The lawyer, the mayor, they said, ah, excuse the expression, dump it. We'll be pretty good. So what you two people are saying, that if I want to build onto my home, I don't need a permit? I don't need the code enforcer or anything. I can just build it and tell you tough luck. The mayor and the lawyer said, it's okay. Take it easy on those people. You people are trashing our city. You all are trashing our city. Don't you people ever look at our city? Or you don't care? The mayor don't care, because he's the one that's quote-quote, "Take it easy on them people." So that means people don't need permits for anything. That's why we have all these street vendors. I think all of you, including the one that left early, and the two that aren't here, and the other one, if we don't need City Council to be here so you can address the public after we leave or before, I guess we should vote them people out. You people work for the city of Baldwin Park. You don't work to stay home and not do anything but be on a video. That's not what we voted you guys in for. We voted you to be here at this City Council. That's what it's for! And you people change the rules. Oh, lawyer.
Sorry, your time is up. Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Thank you. Sorry, you gotta tell you the bad news all the time.
All right, thank you very much. Next is Kiana. She will speak on RSO updates.
Hello, I'm Kiana, and I'm a resident of Baldwin Park, commenting on the rent control updates. I really appreciate that you all listen to the important concerns we have around tenant safety and human rights. I truly appreciate that. The utility increases, as an addition, is truly a loophole for rent increases, and we know this. And making that a violation will be a justice that our people really need as to close that loophole. Now, if you're a mom-and-pop landlord, they will still make a profit under the rent control. It is just restricting how much the rent increases may be and other human rights protections, as we've seen. The landlords here are not Baldwin Park residents. They're outsiders trying to take advantage of our community. The only reason that I see as an incentive to oppose this update is political gains and kickbacks that Monica Garcia and Paul Hernandez have accepted from developers in the past, and that's unacceptable. As a tenant counselor, I have spoke to many Baldwin Park tenants, and they have all been low-income and struggling, and especially with rent increases. I've had friends who've had to move out of Baldwin Park because the rent was raised three-hundred dollars, and it could be raised more than that in, within any time period under, if you're at a single-family home, if, if you don't have the rent control. You have to put yourself in that position of a tenant where you're in a single-family home with no state protections, you have a family of four, and the landlord raises the rent at any amount. This is displacing our people. AB fourteen-eighty-two, to be clear, does not cover single-family homes, duplexes, and condominiums. Additionally, the CPI that others were speaking about does not correlate with the wages of our community. There are usually between, our rents are averaged between eighteen and twenty-two hundred for a two-bedroom. And this is not, this is just almost affordable for our people here, and it needs to stay that way. We have fourteen percent of our populace, population, living at the poverty line, according to data USA, and a majority of our community are considered low-income in L.A. County. We must think about our most vulnerable community members, our seniors, our single parents, and our families with children. There's childcare costs to consider. There's many other costs to consider, especially with unemployment being so high and us being in the most unprecedented economic crisis in the history of the United States. You all have a choice to make. Do you care about profits of outsiders or the tenants and families having a place to call home that's safe? And this is just the start to what we need to do to provide more affordable housing for the people in our community. So I really appreciate that y'all are bringing this forward.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I hope you consider, can finish the conversation in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, next is Yvonne Garcia. Yvonne Garcia will speak on item number nine. And she needs an interpreter. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Yvonne Garcia. Soy residente de Baldwin Park por veinte años. Por quince años estuve rentando un apartamento. Las rentas eran excesivas. Afortunadamente encontré una casa donde la persona que me renta es muy justa, y este, y he podido vivir y pagar la renta de esta, de esta casa.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Garcia. I'm a Baldwin Park resident for twenty years. For fifteen years, I've been renting an apartment, and I was able to afford a house, a single home, because I met someone who is a very just person in the last five years.
Me gustaría que todas las personas que vivimos en, pues en California, Baldwin Park, en específico, pudiéramos tener la misma oportunidad de vivir tranquilos sin estar esperando que en cualquier momento nos suban la renta de manera excesiva y estar espantados de que no podemos pagar y qué vamos a hacer con nuestras familias.
I like everyone in California, in Baldwin Park specifically, to have the same opportunity to live in a home without having to be concerned about the rent increase that would scare us and kick us out.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Christine Fang, who will also speak on item number nine.
Hi, my name is Christine Fang.
Please leave your mask on. Thank you.
I represent the owner of the Wanna Quick Mobile Home Park on Puente Avenue. The current rent for the tenants of the Wanna Quick Mobile Home Park is between eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and nine-hundred-and-forty dollars per month, which is very low compared to twenty-three-hundred dollars of two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment in Baldwin Park, okay? And for the past five years, we only increased the rent by an average of thirty-five dollars per year, which is less than four percent of the rent. And with, we, even without a rent control, you know, imposed by the city, we already maintain a reasonable rent increase, and we do not really need to be imposed on a rent control. And we spent money, you know, to maintain the park. We spent like twenty-five-hundred thousand dollars to renovate, renovate the pool in two thousand and sixteen. We spent fifteen thousand dollars to renovate clubhouse in two thousand and nineteen. Another eighty-five hundred dollars, you know, to pave the asphalt in two thousand and twenty-one. And all these costs are now passed through to the tenants. Owners pay all of this out of the pocket. And we also, you know, is planning to increase the number of the street light in two thousand and twenty-two, and the estimated cost is about ten thousand dollars, which again will be carried by the owner owning. It's not going to be passed through to the tenants either. So we upkeep and maintain the mobile home park very well with a minimum rent increase. And when the rent increase in controlled, we are, as a park owner, we are forced to limit the regular maintaining, including the pool, the side, the asphalt, everything, in order to keep, you know, the investment profit margin. The park will not look as nice as it is right now. And this park has no eviction in the past fifteen years, okay? So we really need to oppose this amendment to the ordinance, and I hope that you don't include in the mobile home park with the rent control together with the single-family resident community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Rios.
I'm gonna need a translator. I'm gonna talk in English. Mayor, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park.
Alcalde. Dentro de Baldwin Park.
The last mayor that we had here, the last ten-minute speech that they did and everything, that's one of the reasons he wasn't voted in again. So that's one of the reasons he lost, Mr. Mayor. You have to understand that people were not put up with what you're doing. One of the things that we've seen, I go all over the city of Baldwin Park, talk to the residents and everything. They call me up, they talk to me. They're up to the top of their heads why the mayor is keep on letting the street vendors allowing here. They don't have licenses, they don't have insurance. One of the things, we have a department code enforcement. I've talked to them. And don't turn around and blame Ben for the problems that you guys are having. One of the things that you have to understand, the publicity that you have right now is down, down the drain. One of the things that you guys are doing, and you're doing it wrong, you don't get the community outreach. I've called City Hall. We leave messages and you never return our calls. La policía mira cosas que están mal, oh, excuse me. The police department goes around, they look at certain things, and they don't stop and give tickets out or tell the people there right there in front of fire hydrages to move. That's against the law. One of the things that I did, I went to the county health department. They told me they would come in into the city and remove all the street vendors because they don't have no license and no health permits. Another thing is that I've talked to them, did an outreach to the sheriff's department. If our police department from the city cannot do it, the sheriff's department is gonna give me an answer within this week. So that's one of the things that we're going out as a community. If it gets to the needy-greedy, we will do a presentation to the City Council to open the riot.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards we received.
Great. So at this point, if somebody was looking to speak and doesn't have a speaker card, now is your time. Great. Looking that nobody is looking to speak, at this moment, I will close public communication. Seeing that most of these comments are related to item number nine, we can discuss them when that time is here. So if there's anybody looking to pull an item from the consent calendar, now is your, now is your time.
Mr. Mayor, can I pull item three, please?
All right, item number three.
I will pull item number eight.
And I'll pull item number seven.
Mayor, I'll pull, I'll pull item number four.
Great. So at this moment, I will make a motion to pass Consent Calendar items number one through six, and that excludes item number seven, number eight, number three, and number four. And that is a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And then, city clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
I believe the second was Councilmember Hernandez or was it Councilmember Damian? Oh, it's Councilmember Hernandez?
I didn't second it, but yes, it was Councilmember Damian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm looking. All right. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
And they pass.
Great, thank you. And then, Councilmember Hernandez, I believe you have the floor with that.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring us to all of our attention just because of, you know, the eminent domain that we're proposed to do at this, you know, Manny or staff or perhaps Robert, if you can just share with us, you know, the reason for why we're doing the eminent domain on this particular parcel and also what a three-quarters vote means for the city council. Please, thank you.
Robert, I'll go ahead and start the conversation. If I miss anything, feel free to jump in. The purpose of the, of this staff report is to purchase a property adjacent to Barnes Park. The water company was not initially looking to sell this property, although it is strategically placed adjacent to Barnes Park. So they indicated if we would like to purchase it, we would need to initiate eminent domain, and we have already agreed on a price. So I believe this is more of a formality than anything. Eminent domain assists the seller by allowing additional time for them to reinvest the money versus a straight sale of 90 days. I believe this allows them three years to reinvest the money pursuant to IRS regulations. Robert, city attorney, did I miss anything or would you like to elaborate on any element?
No, I believe that is correct, Mr. Carrillo. The homeowner was not willing to sell, you know, without the city eminent domaining the property, but the, they have indicated that they've come to an agreement on price. So it's not going to be what your typical eminent domain would entail, which is a lawsuit and a long fight with the property owner about what the value of the property is. In this instance, the reason why the property owner wanted to eminent domain or didn't want to eminent domain but didn't want to sell unless it was eminent domain is for other reasons other than price. When usually, when you eminent domain a property, there's a fight about price and there's a long legal battle. That's not going to occur here. Seems to be a very simple transaction at this point, but we are initiating formal eminent domain proceedings, and the property will be eminent domained. You are allowed to do that under state law because we're using it for public purpose.
And, Robert, just for clarification, what's the vote count that we need to move forward with eminent domain?
It would, three-fourth vote, but in this case with five people, it's a four-fifth. So that, four-fifths is gonna, is what you need.
Perfect. And just for clarification, Manny said it was Water District, you said it was a property owner, homeowner. Who is it? Which is it?
I, I could go ahead and respond to that. The owner of the property is officially Rosemeat Properties Incorporated. That is the official name of the landlord and owner of the property.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, I'd like to move forward as staff recommended the report. That is my motion.
Great. Second, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
That passes.
Great, thank you for that. And then, at this moment, I believe Councilmember Garcia has the floor with item number four.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this item because I felt like I needed to go on record on, on this. I'm not going to oppose this project because I, I think that any improvement for our community is good. But I did want to say that, you know, here we are talking about creating affordable housing for our community and the various ways that we can do that. And unfortunately, there was a affordable housing project that was proposed at the site that the city council scrapped. And, and now we're looking at a park. And I also wanted to just mention that $6 million is a generous amount, and we are grateful to, I think it was Senator Rubio or Assemblymember Rubio that allocated this amount. And there was a county study that identified deficits in our community when it came to park space. Our downtown area was not one of those areas. I think that, and Manny Carrillo can speak to this, but I think it was more in the southwest region and the south part of our city where we really needed to provide more park space for our, our residents. And so with the $6 million allocation, I think we would be able to do that. But instead, we're going to place this park here in our downtown area where, if you ask me, the affordable housing would have been a wonderful asset to contribute to the revitalization of our downtown area. I just needed to state that for the record. I'm not going to oppose this. I think, like I said, any improvement for our community is good. But I did need to just mention that because I really do think that the $6 million could benefit our community in a different pocket based on a study by the county which identified, like I said, the deficits for park space. So I just needed to state that for the record. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, and I do agree with Councilmember Garcia that we are very, I mean, we are very park poor, especially up on the north side where I live. You know, we, we still desperately need a lot of more open space. In this particular case, you know, I was a huge proponent for this park plaza because to me, it serves us two, two services here. One is creating, the creation of open space. Two, a revitalization of our downtown. We keep saying we want to make our downtown walkable, and we want to bring people to our downtown. But the reality is that if we have 120 apartment units across the street from downtown and we have nothing for these people to walk to, what's the purpose of revitalizing downtown? We need a downtown that is going to attract our residents and people out of our community to come and spend their, their tax dollars here. We're talking about trying to bring in more revenue for our city. We're increasing our sales tax. We'll do that. But the main reason I also was a big proponent of this project was the fact that the city council unanimously voted to bring this project in back of several years ago with huge buy-in from the community. The community input meetings were a huge success. Everybody was excited about this park plaza coming to our downtown. The fact that we spent over half a million dollars on the design and the renderings for this project and it being a shovel-ready project, and then we just basically said, hey, you know what? We spent $500,000, but now let's just go ahead and build 120 units. To me, it's like, well, if we've got the funding, the $6 million to bring this plaza here and have the ability to build it and save those $500,000 that we had originally already spent that was pointed out in the state controller's audit report, to me, this was a win-win. Number one, we don't have to worry about losing those $500,000 that we already spent. Number two, we have full funding for this project so that we now have a community place where people can come and congregate and now have the ability to make downtown a walkable area trying to attract new businesses so that our residents have an actual downtown like other cities have. So for me, this is one of the main reasons why I was a big proponent for this particular project. But again, I think it's a huge win-win for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd agree with you, Councilmember Damian. You know, this is one of the things that came up in the state audit when that came out. And it's important, right, that we have to right the wrongs. Not only that, but you know, when, when, when the project was first, when the original project was what, the civic plaza was first scrapped, the idea was never affordable housing. It was market-rate homes, I believe, and then it was luxury condos. And because those, either of those didn't go through, then we went, then the previous council went with Rome. And then, as we know, the reason we scrapped this is not because we don't care about affordable housing. It's because Rome didn't do their part. And so from what we observed, they didn't meet their contractual obligations, which was questionable because they had a, an extension before I came in. So there was another question as to why a company like this that wasn't meeting their requirements when the city was funding a big portion of this project, wasn't meeting their requirements. Also, those projects are very expensive. I know that currently we're waiting on a staff report on the first phase to try to understand what happened there because they did receive a quantifiable amount of millions of dollars in loans plus property. So the first phase actually cost the city a lot of money, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of checks and balances in how we're going to recoup that, that dollar amount. If I'm not mistaken, it's at least $11 million plus $2 million valued property. So that, that's something to also keep in mind, that the vision here was never affordable housing to begin with. I do believe that this is important. A lot of our constituents have talked about, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're feeling fatigued with drive-throughs and what is known as corridor development. And our residents want to be able to enjoy their downtown, and I think that this is going to revive that. It's going to help the businesses that are here now, and it's going to help us lock in more businesses to come to our downtown and create revenue. So there, we can also actually look to bring in people that ride the metro link. Currently, people are just riding by Baldwin Park because there's nothing to do for them if they were to stop here. So there is a lot of things. I do believe, however, that this is the best option, especially because it's city hall, and we want our city hall to be prominent, and we want it to look nice. This is where stakeholders come in, this is where residents come in for services to ask questions. And this, this project actually does involve a facade rehab for our city hall, which is much needed. Our city hall was built in 1970, and it hasn't seen any real major updates as of then. If you look outside, you see that there's a, I believe there's a leak out there that goes into the basement, and it's actually covered with tar. So red brick, red brick flooring with a piece of tar in the middle. And then you can see that there's multiple shades of red. So it is important that we look at the aesthetics if we want to continue to bring people in and businesses as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'm very, also very much in favor of item number four. I recall when this item was brought up, and at the time I was city clerk, and everybody was excited and voted for it. And as time went by, the plans changed. I remember the community being very involved and very excited in bringing this plaza to our city. And I agree, you are right. How can we have a walkable city when there's nowhere to walk to? This Socalo or Civic Plaza will create that for our residents. It will be the beginning of starting that walkable community that we're all looking forward to have in improving our downtown area. That was just not a good place for affordable housing, which we are working on, continue to bring to the city of Baldwin Park. It wasn't meant for affordable housing in the first place. It was meant for that plaza. So I'm very excited to continue the focus that was put there by the former council members at one point and also our residents. And do, do know that we are continuing to work on the affordable housing in other areas of our city. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number four.
I will second.
Great. City clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And then, speaking of affordable housing, we actually have Grant and Brian from San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity here today regarding item number seven. You can come on down to the dais. Ben, you want to kind of explain what item number seven is?
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven represents the, the final step before we can officially move forward with the development of 12 single-family homes at 12779 Torch Street with San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. We have a, the councils approved the, the design and layout. This is, we've approved a loan agreement. Now this is the implementation agreement to essentially move forward with the project. And after this, I think we can move all systems forward. So this is very exciting. The other part of the report tonight is that we did a economic analysis, as we should when we're subsidizing affordable housing projects like this. And, and it, it, the conclusion of the analysis provided by RSG is that the amount of funding, the $1.4 million that we loaned to this project is, is a reasonable amount to fund the project as the, as the units will be sold to low-income families. So it's all systems go. That's the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Brian and Grant for joining us. You know, I, I'm a big fan, and I've always made it very clear that I'm a big fan of the mission that Habitat for Humanity is, is committed to. And I also want to thank Habitat for Humanity for joining us on Saturday, and they were there helping us get ready to house our unhoused neighbors. So they are committed all around to the idea of providing people with homes. And so I just want to pass it on to you real quick, and I also like to know if you have an idea of what these homes are going to cost. Yeah, so you want to press the blue button on the mic?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. My name is Grant Howard, Director of Real Estate Development. I'm here tonight with Ryan Wong, Executive Director for San Gabriel Valley Habitat. We're very pleased to have the opportunity to embark on this new project. We appreciate very much the city council's willingness to consider and approve this project to move forward. We see this as one of, we hope, many opportunities that we may have to be of service to the Baldwin Park community and city in bringing about new affordable ownership opportunities, new construction as well as preservation. And so you were asking about the cost. Are you speaking about the cost of purchasing a unit when this project has been completed?
Correct.
Okay. Brian, do you want to address that matter?
Absolutely. Thank you again so much for having us and partnering with us. This project is so exciting, especially on a night with, with housing costs as a big topic. The exciting thing about this is we're going to be providing 12 brand-new units for the residents of Baldwin Park. So the first people who are going to have an option to purchase these properties are going to be people who either work or live in the city. And the qualifications for this are going to be fairly generous. This is, this is the income levels that are based by HUD. So if you're a family of four making less than $90,000, you have an opportunity at these homes. If you need a lower down payment, the approximate down payment for this house, these houses are going to be about $5,500. There's going to be no mortgage insurance on these properties. These properties are going to be incredibly affordable to the homeowners long-term. And when I say that, I mean that the average all-in payment, PITI, is going to be about $1,600. So as we've heard, existing rent is already, in many cases, above that level today. And there's always the potential for it to go higher, regardless if there's rent control or not. It's only going to go up. Whereas, once you have these properties, we're locking in affordability, not only for the families, but for the families that go after them. The question of cost is... Um, the question of cost is, the cost for these homes. Um, we use, uh, our own contractors, so obviously we're looking to keep the expenses down as low as possible. The all-in cost is probably gonna be in the five-fifty range for the price of the house. Now, the reason that the all-in cost for you, for each of the homeowners is so low. Is we're able to layer in subsidies from state, federal, local, um, areas. And so the actual mortgage that the person is paying on is probably gonna be three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So they're paying three hundred on a loan for three hundred thousand. They're buying a house for five hundred and fifty. Uh, we can only do this because of, uh, the various subsidies that we're able to layer in. Um, and again, the reason we're able to do this is we don't make this a lottery. It's not one person gets the house. And they celebrate and they're good forever. We have affordability restrictions, which means. Every family thereafter is also gonna have, uh, these restricted sales prices. So we are excited. We are excited to be able to do this project. And we have another, uh, a number of other properties that we're looking to do the same type of, a transaction with. Now that we know that we're gonna be moving forward hopefully here after the vote, uh, in the next month or so, uh, before the end of the year. We will come back on our website, um, make applications easy online so you can find out whether your family would qualify or not. Um, we'll have pictures, renderings of what the property is gonna look like, uh, maps and so forth. Uh, so hopefully, uh, the community as a whole can take advantage of this, uh, take a look at it. Uh, and obviously, based on how much interest we have, is gonna be how much more we can do. Uh, but we are ecstatic about this opportunity. Uh, and then we'll, we'll be able to go from there. Thank you.
Mayor?
Great, thank you. And then I just quickly, I do wanna say, you know, and then we've also started partnering on our, uh, affordable, uh, repair programs. So, uh, low-income families can call Habitat. They can file an application, go through the process, and if they qualify, they can get help with, uh. Uh, necessary infrastructural updates and that includes ADA accessible. I saw recently you did a bathtub, I believe, and, um, and then the city is, is also working on it. I know that we're still working out the numbers, but we've, we have, um. We have allocated another three point five million dollars to rehab acquisition and, and that affordable repair program. So, you know, I think it's important for, for residents here and renters to know that the city is taking, uh, you know, serious approaches towards. Or it's, uh, vulnerability in the housing. In housing and also how we can help them gain that generational wealth. To put them in a position of stability and independence, but not only them, also their offr- offsprings and generations, so. So, and you guys are, you know, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be possible without Habitat and, and you guys and helping us manage this. So we're, we're very grateful.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Brian, uh. Grant, I just wanna thank you. I am as ecstatic as you are. It is very exciting, uh, to hear. That we're starting off with twelve affordable per, uh, homes to purchase, brand-new homes to purchase. It's unheard of nowadays. It, it, it's hope for those just getting out of college or those that, that are barely making the. The, the mortgage now, I think, or the rental, excuse me. That they can say, wow, my income is really going to qualify me for a home when in the past it would not. And so I'm, I'm very excited as well as you are. That we're starting this project now and I look forward to more projects like this because it gives hope to the young generations that are. Either coming straight out of high school or trade school or just starting off a life with their family that they're sitting there. Maybe living with their parents saying, I'm never going to be able to afford a house. But this is the steps that this city's taking to let them know, yes, you will be able to afford a home someday. Because we're doing everything possible along with you guys to provide that, that opportunity for them. And I'm, I'm very excited. I'm very excited and, and I look forward to meeting those new families that will be moving into these. Brand-new homes that will be built soon. Also, thank you for, for the repair program that you're doing for our community members because it's true. Once you do have a home, it is expensive to keep up your home. It's either you can save for months and months and finally fix something, then by the time you fix it, okay, you have to fix something else. So by you providing that program, it, it gives the, our, to our community members the opportunity to keep up their house if they're not able to do so. So thank you very much for the work you're doing here in the city of Baldwin Park and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Just one quick word on the, on the repair programs. Uh, it is really important for us to provide new housing and new housing opportunities, but it's just as important. For us to let people age in the houses they've been in. Uh, you know, we do know that the reality is, as families get older, as, as homeowners get older and they don't have the resources. To fix their houses up, they are forced to leave and it does have an effect on the community. It does have an effect, uh, on everything around them. Um, and I know it's our preference and I'm sure it's your preference, excuse me, and, and the community's preference to keep. The community a community. So for the families that are, are low-income or living on set dollar amounts. This is an opportunity that we can come in and do critical home repairs. Um, insulation, windows, doors, health and safety issues. Uh, and it's better for everybody. It is the best money spent is to keep. People in the houses that they've lived in for their entire lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for being here.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
I just wanna express my appreciation to Habitat for Humanity, San Gabriel Valley, and. Just to let you know that I, I really appreciate the partnership with our city and the various projects that you've completed here. Um, just wanted to say thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Thank you. Uh, again, uh, really excited about these pro- these units, uh, but not only that, but also the, the Habitat programs. Uh, because again, our housing stock in all Baldwin Park, uh, is very old. Um, and we do have now a generation in which homeowners, uh, do not have the means to keep up, uh, with their, with their units. Um, or their homes, as we just mentioned, especially as, uh, Mayor Protem just, uh, eloquently just mentioned, uh, in her comments. Uh, the cost of maintaining a home, whether it's a roof, uh, fencing, even just a yard work. Uh, as we've seen, as we drive around, uh, several times and even including neighbors on my own block. Uh, I'll send my gardener to go help them, um, to take care of their front yard because I know they're on a fixed income and they can't do it anymore. Um, and it's something that they did on their own as a pride of ownership, um, and, you know, doing the programs and instilling. Uh, the work that Habitat for Humanity is doing, uh, will, you know, slowly help, uh, you know, our city and help the housing stock. Uh, in our community because as Mayor Protem just mentioned, is when people can't afford to maintain these homes, uh, they sell them. And, you know, we lose, uh, you know, we lose the residents in our city. So thank you again, Brian, for, uh, working with us and, uh, it's, you know, bringing that program, you know, uh, back when I was, when I worked in the city of. Uh, city of Los Angeles and I was responsible for the city, the community of Ball Heights. Uh, we worked with another nonprofit that did very much the same work, uh, that you're doing. That, uh, came in and helped seniors and others, uh, you know, maintain their homes and make them livable. Um, especially as they age gracefully. Um, so I, I understand that a hundred percent, have seen it work and, uh, the more that we can do that in our city. Uh, especially for those that are on the fixed income, uh, that is, uh, better for all of us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, I will make a motion to pass item number seven. Can I get a second? Uh, second by Mayor Protem, City Clerk. Can I get a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And then I believe we have number, item number eight and then, uh, which council member had called for that?
That is mine, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Damian.
And mine is just more of a clarification, uh, for, I guess this is Ben. Ben, under page eighteen, exhibit A of the Contract Scopes of Services. Uh, the fourth, uh, title, their number of households to be assisted. This number can vary, but for purposes of this agreement, LLS LA. Expect to assist approximately thirty to eighty households with some type of service. Just for clarification, Ben, um, they're assuming thirty to eighty, but let's just say we have a hundred or more households. They will service those additional households above the eighty, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, that, that is just an estimate. And we will absolutely monitor and see how many will be able to be served. It could be much, much more, so just an estimate.
Got it, but we will be able to service them under this agreement. Perfect. Okay, that's the only question that I have.
Great, thank you. Did you have a, uh, motion?
Yeah, if nobody else has any questions, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. Item number eight.
Second.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, maybe Councilmember Garcia. Okay, uh, City Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And so at this moment, I will move to, uh, City Council acting as the successor agency of the Dissolved Community Development Commission. And there is a consent calendar and I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? Seconded by Mayor Protem, City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And at this moment, I move to report to officers. Um, Mayor Protem, I believe this was an item that you had, um, asked for and I'd like to give you the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, as a lot of you may remember, back when we did the, the rent ordinance, we did a rent freeze and it was very successful here for our residents of Baldwin Park. Unfortunately, it wasn't for some because, um, we were not informed that they were having problems in time, but. We did do everything to be able to protect our residents. At that time, I did ask that we include. Single-family homes, uh, and everything else that we have listed on this new ordinance. Um, at that time, it did not pass. And we do have, uh, a rent freeze not done by the city of Baldwin Park at this time. Now it is by LA County. Which still protects our residents, but that will end at the end of this year, starting twenty twenty-one. That will no longer be in effect, leaving our residents that are renting. In homes, in single-family homes, condo, duplexes. Or even mobile homes. May be displaced. Because what happens a lot of times when your rent increases. You can't afford to stay in that home and you will become homeless. And as Mr. Masiel, unfortunately, he had to go through that at one time. And he had his children. He's not the only one. I have met many families from our school district that have become homeless because they cannot afford the rent. And this is why I, I felt it needed to, we needed to do something. We needed to protect everybody. And it is great that we're protecting those that are, are in apartments, but we needed more protection. And so that's why I asked that we bring this forward. And I know there was a lot of comments from the mobile homes parks saying and that they don't increase their rent. And I appreciate that. So if you're already a landlord. That is fair and you're not increasing the rent, it won't affect you in any way because you are already being fair. It is for those that tend to take advantage of rent increases and displace our families. What happens when the rent increases? We will have more homeless. Right now, we're, it, we are dealing with the national homeless issue. And we have seen it here in the city of Baldwin Park. And increasing the rent will increase the homeless. I can guarantee you. I know the city of Santa Ana just passed a rent control similar to the one we're trying to pass tonight. And as they stated, and I just stated a little bit ago. If we don't do this, we'll have more homeless. There was a study in twenty eleven. It is done by the Winnipeg Rent Control and it says. Excuse me, found that more housing was built after rent control was enacted. According to the boom and bust cycles of local housing construction are driven by the overall health. Economy, not rent control. So that's not going to affect us. There's also another. Eric Fisher, recent ana- analysis of San Francisco. He has done this from nineteen fifty to present day. Found that rent control did not increase rent overall and it not, it did not distort the rental market. Our analysts that, they looked into situations like. In Massachusetts, a study showed that when rent control was eliminated, which some suggested. Ostawa housing formerly under rent control. And now under, uh, no more rent control. The uncontrolled units rose dramatically. So that meant it was an increase. And then there's another urban planner, John Bilderboom, showed that modern rent control laws in hundreds of cities. Have not negatively impacted the quality and quantity of rental use. It has actually motivated landlords to maintenance of rental housing. By law, the landlords need to comply with code requirements for rental housing. And effective enforcement. So the point here being. We are not looking to affect the landlords. We are also working with the landlords, but you have to keep in mind, we also need to protect our residents. We don't want any more residents house, uh, homeless on the streets, sleeping in their car. So we must protect them regardless of whether they're in a house, apartment, a condo and, or a mobile home. Again, I commend those of you that don't increase the rent, that keep it below the API. That's what we all should do because we should think about everybody. Yes, it's good to make money. I agree. And sometimes we do buy properties, not that I have any rental properties. But that's a business. Yes, it is, but you have to also look out for others, not just for yourself. So with this, I wanna make a motion. I am very much in favor of making this change with the amendments. That the attorney will be making. So if you can go ahead and make those amendments?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Avila. So there, uh, in the ordinance, uh, there was one typographical error in section one-twenty-nine point oh-one A. Uh, the date for all residential units should be nineteen ninety-five. So all residential units before nineteen ninety-five. Are covered by the RSO. So that's number one. Second of all, on section one-twenty-nine point two-six. Uh, we will add the term residential real property that is alienable separate from the title of another dwelling. And occupied by one, uh, single family. So that term will be added to one-twenty-nine point two-six in order to, um, make, uh, it, it is this, in order that the city is consistent with the Costa-Hawkins. Rental Housing Act because, uh, that, uh, Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act does limit in, in, in some ways. A single-family, uh, homes. And that's why we're using, we're making this kind of correction in order to make sure that we are in compliance with that act. I wanted to mention one other thing, uh, Vice Mayor. Um, that in Owens v. City of Oakland Housing Residential Rent and Relations Board, the Court of Appeals addressed the question about whether. Costa-Hawkins exempts individual rooms in a single-family home that are rented in, to separate tenants. The Court of Appeal in that case found that the rooms that were rented to individual tenants are not exempt from rent control, even though they are within a single-family home. Uh, in addition, if there's a single-family home where there's more than one family living in that home, that single-family home is not exempt under Costa-Hawkins Rental Act. The language that I've asked you to add there, uh, is our attempt to, um, carve our, our ordinance around the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act. But at the same time, make it as strong of ordinance as we can under state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So with those.
Before, before you make your motion, Vice Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so. I, I've looked over this, uh, the staff report and I've looked over a lot of different information, um. You know, and I'm looking at the cost of everything going up. Example, right now, at this point in time. Our property values are at its highest that they've ever been. Um, that will allow the county to reassess property taxes. So there, now you have a property tax component that's gonna add to, to their monthly over, uh, total overhead. Homeowners' insurance has also increased by approximately thirty to forty-five dollars a month. Homeowners' insurance has also increased by approximately thirty to forty-five dollars a month. Also, since we are including condos and townhomes in this ordinance, I also have to take into consideration the HOA fees that they have to pay. Um, so taking all of that into consideration, plus the cost of living, which obviously that's a whole different subject with the custom inflation currently, my my suggestion is I don't have, uh, I I I don't oppose this ordinance. I'm just not comfortable with the three percent or the eighty percent CPI, whichever is less. So I would feel more comfortable if we were to eliminate the eighty percent CPI component altogether and increase the rent cap from three percent to five percent. Because at least this would allow protection for all of our residents and all of the you know, units that we're including in this ordinance, but it's still also allowing for these landlords to be able to cover any increase in overhead costs. Um, you know, I'm looking at the average cost of rent right now. I've got three three residents that reached out to me. One, and these all live on in single-family residence, one went from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. They increased the rent by seven hundred dollars, thirty-nine percent. The other one was fifteen hundred dollars, now they're paying seventeen twenty-five. And then the third one was paying twenty-four hundred, now they're paying twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. So, you know, in in most instances, a lot of these single-family residences are taking advantage that we don't have rent control in place, and they are increasing the rent substantially, especially at the at this point in time when a lot of our residents are trying to bounce back from this uh COVID pandemic. So if we're willing to negotiate or work with that cap and eliminate the eighty percent CPI component to this, I would uh lean towards uh voting in favor of this ordinance. But with the three percent or the eighty percent CPI, we're going to be squeezing too many necks. Uh, it's going to be very tight with the cost, with the increases uh going up for these landlords as well.
So you are proposing to do a five percent?
I'm proposing just, you know, eliminate the eighty percent CPI component, just eliminate that completely and just put a flat three uh five percent uh cap.
I don't I don't have a problem with that.
And so Vice Mayor uh i- i- and Councilmember Damian, if that's the case, then you will also add a change to section one twenty-nine point oh four C. And we will eliminate the language three percent or eighty percent of the CPIU, whichever is lower. And we will replace that with five percent.
Correct.
So those would be the three uh changes, uh if uh if you're amenable to that.
I
You would be making a motion for.
I don't have a problem with the recommendations that Councilmember Damian has done. And the recommendations that you have added to our uh item number nine.
Okay, and so your motion includes the three amendments we just mentioned?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much uh for bringing this item to, you know, to our attention. You know, I I there's there's many, there's many issues that I see with this ordinance. First and foremost is, you know, the timeliness and the uh lack of transparency uh that we're trying to rush through, uh, you know, something that's going to have a financial impact to many of our residents, uh not only on the tenant side, but also on the on the on those that rent their, you know, their homes to our residents. You know, it's funny that, you know, when we're trying to look at, you know, the vendors issue that we've been able to delay that issue for quite some time to try to study that and understand that. It but yet we're trying to, you know, bull rush uh an ordinance less than two weeks when we said, you know, staff would reach out, send out appropriate uh notifications to all parties involved. You know, as the former, you know, as the co uh writer of the ordinance that we instilled, you know, two years ago, that's, you know, uh that um Councilmember, excuse me, uh Mayor Protem mentioned, I am supportive of, you know, protections. That's not an issue. But I also looked at it at being fair, fair to our, you know, the those that provide the 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 homes and the apartments for our tenants, because I also also want to make sure that we create a balance that allows for uh the upkeep of our facilities here uh over the over the long term. Now, if you go to the city of Los Angeles, who have had uh rent control for quite some time, and you go to the more disadvantaged communities of Boyle Heights, South LA, and everything else, I I can tell you for a fact, speaking with uh homeowners and others and property owners uh because of rent control, they do the bare minimum to maintain those units. And what we're going to see under the current proposal, even with the with the adjustments uh that Councilmember uh Damian um uh has advocated and changed for, that still does not allow for the ability for a uh property owner, regardless of which, regardless of what they are, to be able to maintain and keep the upkeep of these facilities. Because what's going to happen is they're going to allow and just do the bare minimum. And we heard this earlier with some of the some of the folks here. Where they're just going to do the bare minimum, and the bare minimum is just maintaining the code, which doesn't cost them very much. Um, and that's it. But there's not going to be any new paint. There's not going to be anything else, because there's no incentive for them to invest in their property. Right now, we do have in our current ordinance, because I made sure that we wrote in this, where we provided where the capital improvement uh allowed for up to fifty percent of that to be to be uh distributed to the tenants, right? If you do fifty percent of a homeowner, of a ru- of a, you know, of a major overhaul on somebody's home, you can bring that into a tenant of of a single-family home. That's not going to be fair for the tenant, and it's not going to be fair for the uh property owner. If we're trying to solve the problem of, you know, uh rent increases, you know, moving forward after January first or so, let's, well, then let's implement a rent moratorium. We can do that. We can do that as we study this process and provide the protection for all of our tenants in the meantime, as we go through the process of engaging with all stakeholders and getting their feedback, as what I did uh last time, and also what the city did. I meant with the apartment uh associations, the individual, uh, you know, um individual tenant advocates, uh not only the ones that advocate for here in our city, but also others in other areas to understand what, you know, what they've been doing and what they've been seeing. Uh, you know, this eighty percent, uh, you know, craziness of what I, is what I'll call it, it's actually going backwards. Um, and to instill something that's never been done, uh, because it hasn't, and just because Santa Ana just, you know, did it uh last month, I believe, or this month, I believe, uh, doesn't show that it works. Um, so I don't want to base something on on an experiment that someone else is trying to do uh here in our city. So those are my concerns, and I would ask for us to, if we're really trying to solve the problem of, you know, the rent increase and, you know, of course, uh trying to mitigate the homelessness issues. Well, let's create a, let's provide some instructions to our attorney to provide, you know, by the in two weeks because apparently he's able to provide uh an ordinance within two weeks where they can provide a moratorium on rents, uh, you know, for three months or so, while we have the dialogue uh with our community. Um, so that's is, that's where I stand, and that's why I'm not in support of of the changes that are that are being discussed at this moment. Because again, we are lacking transparency and openness with our community. Um, and the folks that are in the room, some of those folks, is because I reached out, I reached out to a couple people um in the short amount of time that we had, but that's still not enough. That's still not enough to be, you know, for us to, for me to to clearly tell with people that I am, you know, open to hearing their dialogue. Uh, that's just, you know, we haven't done that. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of folks uh that don't attend our city council meetings that don't uh, you know, look at our uh agendas, um, and I, you know, that's why we're here. But at the same time, that's why we have staff to be able to send out postcards to them, making them aware of what we're discussing, and for them to to work through the through the process with staff and us, so we have a better understanding of how this impacts them. Uh, because again, I'm not to say, I'm not against rent control, because again, as the author and the and the proponent of the rent control that we have in our city, uh, I that proves it. Uh, but this is about, you know, uh ramrodding something that is unjust and has not been properly uh flushed out, as we learned earlier, that we're now making changes to the ordinance. I don't have those changes. Sure, the 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 attorney has read them off verbally, but I need to look at them in paper, read them, digest them, and then follow back with the attorney. In fact, the reasons for, one of the main reasons for why the attorney's making those changes is because I brought those to his attention today, okay? So again, there are a lot of gaps in our in our ordinance right now as I see it. And one of the things that I also would like to have a full debrief as we're going through this is the the uh the ordinance, excuse me, the mo- the um, the um the AB fourteen eighty-two that the governor implemented uh that speaks to rent control in the state of California for all of us. So that already exists. So it's again, it's walking through, you know, what they did there, because that became uh effective January first, twenty twenty. And one of the things that I'm also concerned about is by retroactively looking at, you know, twelve months. Uh, and because of the state, uh, you know, rent freezes, we have, uh, you know, homeowners here in Baldwin Park, because I know a few of them that live in Baldwin Park, that they've been able to save money and buy a second home many years ago. Um, and that's their nesting. And they have not been able to raise rates, you know, raise their rates as they as they may, um, you know, in a in a fair, equitable way uh for over two years now. Um, and for us to implement something now that will prevent them from doing that for over two years, that's not fair. That's just absolutely just being uh draconian. Um, and, you know, I just can't stand with that. Uh, but I ask again, if we're trying to solve the problem, let's create a moratorium for the next three months while we discuss this and figure this all out and have a a real uh discussion in regards to what we're trying to implement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I just want to add that this is actually nothing new. Back when the rent freeze was implemented, it was actually something that I had asked our attorney to look into, and it was actually something that I had proposed. So it's nothing new. It had already been requested. It was just voted down. So to say there was no research, that's incorrect. It wasn't allowed to move forward, and and that's the reason why I wanted to come forward, because it's something very much needed in our community. And as I read this reports, it is not going to cause any damage to anybody. If anything, it's going to help our community, because our community needs this. Our community members deserve to stay in their home and not fear that the landlords are going to increase the rent eleven percent, twenty percent at any given moment and not have a place for them to go. So that is why I'm proposing that we add these. The attorney did make some changes to that ordinance, because we had already looked at it. We had been comparing. So maybe you had, you did add some items to there, but those were items that I had already talked to the attorney about. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I have to agree that this process is very rushed and reckless. Um, it took us twelve to eighteen months to draft an ordinance on cannabis. Um, a a land use that was going to be on the outskirts of our city. And yet it's now taken two weeks for an ordinance to be drafted that will impact about six thousand units in our city. And um, I don't know how many property owners. So I would have to agree that, first of all, um, the process has not been transparent. It has not engaged community stakeholders, especially those who will be most impacted. Um, I don't understand why, what is the need? What is the, why are we rushing this? Why don't we want to be more thoughtful on the implications of this ordinance? And how this will reverberate in our community for decades to come? I don't understand why, oh, you know, what is the rush? Is it because we want to, you know, highlight ourselves as being progressive on the issue? Or um, you know, wha- what is the real impetus? Because for an ordinance this impactful, I would think that we would really want to look at where it's worked. Where, um, you know, what have been some of the risks? What have been? Um, how can, how can we measure some of the impact of this? Um, in Baldwin Park, the housing stock is mostly single-family. We have about six thousand units, if I recall. And the majority of those single-family homes are owner-occupied. I still don't understand how this ordinance is going to impact the family down the street who wants to sell their home. And you know what? They bought that home with their life savings, and now you know, they want to move on maybe to another city or um move to a bigger home in our community. And I still don't understand how this ordinance is going to impact the sale of their property. Our community is mostly Latino, you know, and there are a lot, a lot of immigrants in our community that have worked really hard to achieve the American dream and to be homeowners. And we're rushing an ordinance in two weeks that will impact the value possibly of one of their greatest asset. Um, this does not sit well with me. And you, we can make, we can make modifications, but the truth is, we haven't studied. We haven't studied the consequences. You know, I will say that of of many years ago, I turned to my colleagues and I asked, are you sure you want to make this decision? Are you sure you want to rush this decision? And the and the response back was yes. And guess what? That resulted in a seven million dollar settlement with a former chief of police. So I feel strongly that and very compelled to urge you to put more time, effort, thought, consideration to this ordinance. What's the rush? This, I don't understand, what is the rush? Or I mean, even now with um Mayor Protem, you're, you know, wanting to present a motion before council is even having a discussion. What's the rush? I I'm not understanding this. So I'll leave it there. I I don't think that we've been thoughtful on this, so I will not support this.
Mayor, if I may?
Wait, uh, Councilmember Damian, if I may, because I I I haven't made a comment yet. And so, uh, for starters, this isn't about any one of us. This is about understanding what the community needs are. This idea that we're politicking, it's the complete opposite. And every time we hear a new council make a gesture, it's property values. They hate the homeowners. It's all this politicking back and forth. And we, it's quite obvious at this point. I need you to stop. Cannabis development is completely different from rent control. Rent control has been around for decades. All right, you guys. Back when we're done. Cannabis and rent control are two completely separate industries, way different from each other. And, you know, I hate to say, but the cannabis industry here is not the best, right? We're currently dealing with that. Street vendors, we're talking about street vendors. Street vendors are completely different from housing law. And I can argue the same thing about the the ca- the cigarette ban, where we bolted into action. Did we allow a couple of uh uh store owners to come up here and tell us that they're going to lose money and that it was going to affect them? Yes, we did. Did the council listen to them? No. Did the council allow for them any sort of help? No. So this idea that we're being transparent, uh that we're not being transparent, that's also a lie. I sat there. I sat on the other side of this dais in two thousand eighteen. By the way, look up the record. The first person to ever talk about rent control here was myself as an individual before any of the new councils were here. And that was in two thousand eighteen before the elections. Now, this idea that we're sitting here and that we're that we're being intransparent, that's not true. Councilmembers have been here, saw him for fourteen, saw him for ten months, eleven months. At this point, we should all know the needs and the housing needs of our constituents and our residents, especially after a pandemic. We're sitting here, we're fighting about about affordable housing. We're talking about what needs to be done. We're well aware that in LA County, if you make less than a hundred thousand dollars, you're practically poor and you are low income. In the city of Baldwin Park, the average family doesn't go above sixty thousand dollars. The council, the previous council, had the opportunity to pass this in two thousand eighteen, but they chose not to because certain individuals that were sitting up here make rental income money. So, please. The the first ordinance was passed at three percent. We're making this one five, which is a lot better than what it was before. So, you know, I mean, we just, we cannot keep beating beating around the bush, and we cannot keep politicizing everything. Families are hurting. We we ju- we're about to open the tiny home village that is for individuals. And the amount of inquiries that we have for pregnant women, single parents, families is skyrocketing. Because they cannot afford to live there. People are living in their RVs, people are living in their cars. They need help. Baldwin Park is Latino. We know that, and it's Latino families that are hurting. We cannot keep politicizing this issue and spreading false information. There is not one city that you can point to that where property values have died. It's the same thing they said with the tiny homes. It's the same thing they said with the street vendors, and it's the same thing they're saying now. There is not one city where you can There is not one city where you can point to me where property values are down. If there is, please point me to one. I'd like to buy a house. So at this point, you know, it's really time to start putting our money where our mouth is. Throughout the pandemic, we've talked about how important essential workers are. Essential workers are some of the ones that are hurting the most. They can't afford to live where they work, driving thirty to forty miles a day, over an hour, every day. We thank them here. It's easy to thank them, right? But now it's time to act. So if we really care about our seniors, if we really care about the essential workers, if we really care about the families here, then the city needs to act and stop politicizing everything. And I'm well aware of the housing needs because I've, I've been involved. I talk to residents every day. Popular, I know, contrary to popular belief, but I'm out there. I'm at City Hall most of the time. You can find me here. You show up, you might find me here. Now, listen, we have to, we, we have to do our part to defend our families. So I'm going to ask the council to stop politicizing everything, to really offer a solution. But we need to move this forward. You know, it's not, it's not out of nowhere. Two years ago, we, I mean, this is still fresh. The first, the first, uh, ordinance was passed two years ago. The needs and one of the biggest questions were what is getting rent controlled? Not everybody lives in an apartment. So there is a, a vast majority of residents. To our, our property owners and our landlords, we hear you. And one of the things that I've done on this council and given direction is we're looking at bettering water infrastructure in residential areas with A R P money because we're able to collaborate on private property. I'm, one of the things that we're looking to do there is allocate a portion of, of that infrastructure to privately owned, uh, infrastructure, uh, to privately owned property. We're looking at everything we can do. But this is not the way to act after a pandemic. So those are my comments. Uh, Councilmember Damian, if you'd like to make a comment, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, uh, circling back because I know I, I, it's been, it's a lengthy discussion. I've heard a lot of comments going back and forth regarding transparency. But the reality is that there's already an ordinance in place. The only thing is that this ordinance only protects apartments. And the cap is at three percent currently. I heard many of the speakers come up and say that they increased very minimum amount of, of, of rent when they increased their rent, some at two, two point five percent. So if you're already, you know, being very generous with your rent increases, then a five percent cap, you know, you're almost doubling what you're, you're increasing now. If, if you have to do that and you say that you have to pay for repairs, upgrades, well, that comes with part of the business. I mean, you know, I'm a business owner myself and I am very well aware of what my overhead costs are. So I need to make sure that I factor that in when I, you know, schedule my pricing. So when you start renting those apartments, you're already factoring in your profitability. You know, I hear mobile homeowners saying that their rents are only eight hundred and sixty dollars to nine hundred and forty dollars. Let's not forget that the mobile homeowners, are they talking about renting the mobile home unit, including the rent space? Or are they just talking about the rent space alone? Because if you're talking about the rent space alone, then you're just talking about a piece of land. You still have to pay for that mobile home that you're living in. So once you start factoring that in, plus your homeowner's insurance and the taxes on that mobile home, you're not just paying eight sixty or nine hundred and forty dollars a month. That's just for the space. So I see both ends of this here, but to me, I'm not trying to rush anything. I'm trying to do what's right. At, at the beginning in twenty eighteen, when you guys put this ordinance in place, everything was omitted but apartments. Right now, a lot of the people that are hurting are people living in single family homes, duplexes and other areas. And these people are not protected and they are getting taken advantage of. And guess what? They're getting the rents increased by four, five, seven hundred dollars a month. And yet they cannot contact their landlord to fix a leak or repair the roof because then they say, well, if I do that, then I'm going to increase your rent even more. So it's hard because you have good landlords and you have slum lords, right? We can't monitor that. We're not the police to do that. But I think that it's a very fair process to do. If we put a five percent cap, right now, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. A, a lot of people, even though there's a lot of jobs out there, they're not paying enough to, to survive. So I see both ends here. For me, I would be willing to support this ordinance as is with the amendments City Attorney Robert Tafoya made and making the cap just be a fa- a flat five percent, uh, rent increase cap.
And then Councilmember Damian, so I do, another point I had is that we do have to start looking at, we do have to start looking at the pattern and we do have to start ringing the alarm. There is a massive exodus out of this, out of the San Ybo Valley. And of course with Baldwin Park, based on, uh, census population, the city hasn't grown in twenty years. In two thousand and ten, we lost point six percent of our population and this year alone, we've lost four point three percent of our population. And so we sat here and we're talking about health, uh, and this kind of relates to the cigarette ban, right? We're talking about children's health. The inability to afford housing is hurting everybody's health and their ability to stay in their home. Now, you know, I, I've been going to the schools and there's not one school that looks half full. Elementarys have less than five hundred students per, per, per school. You know, there is a massive exodus and it is affecting our families and it's affecting the way that Baldwin Park is going to develop in the long run. So in the long run, we have to prioritize our families and our workers. And we have to treat them like we really care about them, just the sa- the way we were saying about them during the pandemic. So the popu- the, the population and the census is something to keep in mind as we talk about this. But at this point, uh, ma-
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I know somebody who is looking at purchasing a rent control building. And it's really coming at a discount, um, as compared to a market rate multifamily, um, housing existing product. So again, for me, it goes back to how is this going to affect your average family? Didn't even rent, never rented their home, did never thought to rent their home. They lived in their home as a majority of our residents do, owner occupied. Didn't even think, like, this really didn't even impact them until they tried to sell their home. I want to know how is that going to impact the sale of their home because I've seen firsthand where somebody I know personally is going to buy a multifamily ho- um, product, multifamily housing, rent control at a discount price. Because that's just the, the nature of it versus a market rate multifamily housing project. That's my concern here. And that's why I highlight that the majority of our residents in Baldwin Park are, oh, you know, they, they occupy their homes. And, um, they're the ones that are going to be severely impacted is my concern. And we're not even really thinking about that part of this. That's my concern. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor? If I may, Councilmember Damian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, again, everyone has very good, you know, uh, I think everyone's coming from the same, same place, right? This is all about, you know, we all want the best for our city. Uh, no one's, no one's questioning that. Uh, the part that I have is I still have lots of questions. Uh, you know, currently, uh, you know, we haven't even discussed, you know, how many, uh, you know, owner, oh, uh, owner occupied duplexes do we have in the city, right? Like, I want to see and frame the problem to better understand the solution. Uh, and we haven't had the discussion. We did this a little bit, uh, but we focused last time all on the apartments because that was the biggest area that we had the most concerns with. Because that is where all the issues were going. And since then, when we started this, we actually asked, I actually asked, and we instructed staff, um, Ben, if you recall, to start tracking all the complaints that were coming into the city, whether they were coming from single family duplexes or whatever the case. So, because we knew that this, at some point, we would be having this conversation. But in order to do that, we needed to have a better understanding of what's going on out in our city. Now, I do, same with you, Mr. Mayor and others, I meet with individuals. The reason I'm advocating so much at this point is because exactly that. I have been receiving several calls from in, from, uh, Baldwin Park, uh, residents that have a second home on their property. And they're telling me now, like, Paul, Councilmember, I haven't raised my rents in over two years. And now you're asking me that I have to revert my, my, um, you know, my rates twelve months in the back and then start from there? That's not fair. That is completely unfair to these folks. That's not about being, you know, uh, being, protecting the, uh, the, the tenant. That's discounting our residents. And we have several of those people, uh, here, you know, uh, in our city. I don't necessarily care about, you know, the, uh, the, uh, you know, the individuals that own five or fifteen homes in our city or outside of our city. I can care less about that. I care about the individuals, uh, that are here. And that's why I say, again, if we really want to understand the problem and solution, let's take the time to study it. Let's introduce, let's, you know, I, I'll, I'll do the instructions. I'll give the instructions to our, uh, attorney to implement a, a moratorium for six months on rent freeze in our city, which I know we can do. And in the meantime, we can have this dialogue of what's going on. That resolves the, the issues of having rent increases after the county resolves it. And that way we have a better opportunity to bring in and to ask these other questions. Because I have a lot more questions and I'd like to have them answered, um, if we want to do that now, um, but I don't think staff's going to have the time or nor do they have the research in front of them for that, uh, answers to be provided to me at this point. Um, so a- again, that's why I say, you know, we're not being transparent. And for folks to say that we've discussed this in the past, absolutely not. I know the conversations that we were having. Um, and that's not the conversations that we had back then and the data was not provided to us. Um, so again, if we're really, if this is about, as, as everyone is saying it is, it's about protecting our, uh, renters, well, let's implement a six month or a three month, uh, moratorium that allows us to have a further dialogue and conversation around this ordinance, uh, and then be able to fine tune it even better. Um, so it's, it's, uh, applicable for everyone, uh, that would be implemented and be affected by this. Doing this the way it's going is not right. And, you know, uh, if you think this is the right way of implementing policy, big major policy, then I have no idea, you know, what you guys consider as politicking or not. But I'm providing a solution of a, you know, three month, four month, six month moratorium that we can provide the instructions to our city attorney to do that, uh, tonight. And he could obviously bring that back in two weeks. Um, and that will solve the problem of protecting our tenants while we have the co- the, the time to dialogue, uh, on this ordinance. So I guess that will be my motion.
Sure. Okay. So just real quick, didn't you, when you co-authored the first rental ordinance, didn't you, uh, also, uh, revert on the rents for a couple of months?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. But the difference was, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. You asked me a question, so allow me to answer. The, the difference is we had a pande- we have a pandemic right now. And what the ordinance, uh, what we've currently done because of the pandemic is no one's been able to rent, raise rents for over eighteen, twen- o- almost close to two, twenty months, okay? Uh, that's because actually as of January first, people were not able to rent their, uh, rent their increases because of fourteen eighty-two. And that's why I want more cl- clarification. So again, if we're reverting back under this current ordinance, that's quite some time. We have property owners. These are si- the duplexes, the condominiums and the, uh, homeowners, right, that are renting their homes, uh, that, um, that haven't raised their rents in over two years. So now what we're asking for them is to revert their pricing, right? Based on the last twelve months of when they increased their rates. These are questions I, that I still need clarification. I want clarification is do the, uh, ADUs, are these covered under, under this ordinance right now? Uh, what about junior ADUs? Are those also covered under, uh, under this ordinance? So again, that's why I ask for us to just take the time to have this conversation and, you know, instruct our city attorney to, you know, implement a, uh, rent moratorium while we discuss this item, which protects, uh, our renters. It's the same thing as doing this. It just gives us time to have further dialogue around this issue. That's all I'm asking.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass item number nine with the amendment that our attorney-
I had questions for staff. I had questions for staff.
Has made.
I'm sorry.
With the recommendations from Mr. Damian, consideration of amendment to the rent stabilization ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to clarify certain provisions. Uh, by ordinance only, I, item number one, four, six, six, entitled, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, California, amending chapter eleven, section one twenty-nine to the Baldwin Park municipal code prohibiting res- residential real estate property and mobile home space rental rate increases that exceed the five percent annually or, excuse me, we're removing that section of the change in consumer price index, whichever is less, when the city and direct staff to bring back for second reading and adoption of the next regular scheduled city council meeting, again with the recommendations that our attorney has brought forward and Councilmember, uh, Damian has also brought forward. And that is my motion.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, but I had questions, uh, for staff that weren't answered. Um, so I'm still waiting for those answers.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, you made it very clear that you weren't going to get all the answers today. It seems like you're-
Well, I still ask them.
Excuse me, I'm talking and you're going to have to respect the chair.
I'm still asking. Well, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm telling you something. Please, I'm going to have to ask you to relax. Listen, Councilmember Hernandez.
Hey, hold on. Don't tell me to relax first.
Okay, oh, there it is. Councilmember Hernandez, please, if I would have, please, if you were honest and you were being serious about having a real discussion, you would have invited homeowners.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, please do not attack me that way.
And I'm going to have to ask you to stop talking.
I asked several questions.
I'm talking and I'm going to have to ask you to stop. Please, respect the chair.
Mayor, do I have a second?
Come on, come on. Paul, you're a grown man. Now, listen.
Come on, stop, stop, Mr. Mayor. Stop acting like a, like a child, man. Come on.
Okay, now, listen, Councilmember Hernandez.
Just for clarification, sir.
Okay, now, listen, I'm still talking. So if you were being honest and serious about having a real discussion, you would have invited real homeowners and real renters here. But instead you politicized this and you tried to invite as many apartment associations and Realtor associations as possible. See, it's interesting because you didn't do that when you passed your, quote unquote, your, because by the way, you were not supportive of rent control at the beginning. So this idea that you care, please, stop it. You think I, oh, very disrespectful, by the way. Anyways, so Councilmember, please, the politicking is over.
Mr. Mayor, if I just, for, for clarification, sir? Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
We'll be cordial, of course. Um, because we're trying to be cordial. Again, the reason I'm asking is I have questions for, that I proposed and I haven't heard back from the city attorney. That's all it was, sir. Not, it's, it's, this is about formality. So I don't worry about, you know, the, uh, Mayor Protem doing her motion and introducing that. But I propose questions and that's the thing is, again, back to, you know, this issue of now having the information in front of us, I don't even have the changes that are being made in front of us. The, the city attorney hasn't even made that. But that's, that's the size of point. I'll let the, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, move forward with her motion.
City Attorney, please. And then can you clarify if, uh, Councilmember Hernandez was the one that fixed the typo?
Um, well, uh, I spoke with Councilmember Hernandez about, uh, A B fourteen eighty-two. Uh, the changes that I made, uh, were related to the Costa Hawkins, um, uh, the Costa Hawkins Rental Housing Act. But in response to Councilmember Hernandez, um, I think he, you asked, uh, Councilmember Hernandez if, uh, A D U would be covered under this ordinance. It would not be because the A D U has a primary unit where the homeowner is, uh, living, uh, with an A D U. You have to have the owner that's living in the primary unit. So if the whole, if the owner's living in the primary unit, that wouldn't be covered under the rent control ordinance. I believe that's the same with the junior A D U and that is you have to have the owner of the unit, of the primary unit, living in the primary unit. But as long as that's the case, that wouldn't be a part of, uh, the, uh, rent control ordinance here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there?
Vice Mayor, can you please clarify your motion and can you please clarify the amendment, uh, that you made to that? Can you clarify with what properties that is, uh, going to affect?
So I make a motion to pass item number nine, consideration of amendment to the rent stabilization ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to clarify certain provisions. And I would have our attorney clarify the changes that we have made to this ordinance. Go ahead, Attorney.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, so section one, two, nine point oh, one, A, that's going to be nineteen ninety-five, not two thousand. So one, two, nine point oh, one, A, that's nineteen ninety-five, which is the same as the previous ordinance. So that is not changing. Section one, two, nine point oh, four, C, the language that says three percent or eighty percent of the C P I U, whichever is lower, that would be eliminated and it would be changed to five percent, percent to Councilmember Damian's, uh, request. Then section one, two, nine point two, six, will add the term residential real property that is alienable, separate from the title to another dwelling. And one family living in that unit would be, uh, exempt under the ordinance. So those are the three, uh, changes, um, that, uh, we had mentioned earlier.
We're also going to revert to-
We're also going to revert to the month of September instead of the two years uh rent that they have had an increase, only two months to September.
It it it, the ordinance you have in front of you says that the base rental uh price, rental, the base rent would be established by 12 months previously, whatever the rent was 12 months previously, that will establish the base rent. Uh, I think what you're saying is you want to change that to two months instead of 12 months. Only two months previously, that's when it's going to establish the base rent. Okay, so that would be the fourth change.
And that is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Mayor Protemp Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Stany.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
And Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Motion passes three to, three to one, one.
And I'm sorry, for the record, this is ordinance number fourteen six six. We're going to waive the entire reading and just read the title. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, California, amending chapter eleven, section one two nine to the Baldwin Park municipal code prohibiting residential real property and mobile home space rental rate increases that exceed five percent annually within the city. Thank you, Lola.
Thank you. So at this moment, I will open the Baldwin Park Housing Authority regular meeting, and there is a consent calendar. Can I get a uh, I will make a motion to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, can I get a roll call?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair Estrada. Vice Chair Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Board Member Dan Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Board Member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Board Member Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Great, thank you. At this moment, I will move to adjourn the Baldwin Park Housing Authority regular meeting. I will open up the Baldwin Park Finance Authority regular meeting. Uh, and I believe that there is a consent calendar for the treasures report. I will make a motion to pass that. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Estrada?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avila?
Yes.
Board Member Damian?
Yes.
Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Board Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Great. And so at this moment, we're back to city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff request and communications. And I did want to make, and I did want to request that city staff look into increasing our tree count throughout the city, but also see if there's a possibility of working with our uh neighbors in the county. Um, I believe that there is a possibility of increasing our our tree canopy and potentially a tree border along the freeway where the Emerald Necklace is helping us fight off that smog. Recently, we've been seeing the the maps of how polluted our air is and the low quality of our air. So we want to make sure we can combat that, and I think that might be a great way to not only beautify the city and beautify our surroundings, uh, but also better our health. Um, I did also want to make sure, uh, as tiny homes uh appear to get ready for grand opening on Saturday, I know that, uh, you know, the homeless issue has been kind of tricky and things have been moved around. So I would like a staff report on the Tri-City effort, which is a completely different effort regarding when it was ha, when it happened and 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 the supporters of that effort, which is, that is the effort where El Monte South and Monte and Baldwin Park work together. Combat homelessness, a very different effort to the tiny homes and other projects that we have in the city. And I believe there is a, uh, so there was recently a incident on Puente Avenue where I believe somebody was struck, and they passed away, and uh one of the residents reached out and mentioned that there is no crosswalk in between the major crosswalks um and between the major crossways of Puente and I believe is uh, you? Or Puente and, or said. So if we can look into see if we can add something there that can help uh make sure that people are able to cross that street safely, because I know it is a little dark. Um, and then I know Rose, Rose isn't here. Um, but I would like an ARPA update so that we know potentially what funds are left over um and how much we have already kind of categorized for expenditures. And I know that I also recently talked about working with our school districts for music programs. But I think uh there's a lot of support for the idea of our city running its own city uh music programs, and I think there's potential there. Especially now that we have extra space at Morgan Park. Yes.
Yes, I am complete agreement. I I was not a band member, but I was a band mom. So I completely support the music program. And you and I were discussing how the music teachers are on a part-time basis, and it would be ideal to have, provide these programs for our students here in the city of Baldwin Park, and it could be supplemented with funds hopefully from our city so they don't have to pay out of pocket and have award-winning bands in our city, which we already do, by the way. But it would make them even more competitive. So I think it's a great idea. The music department is lacking in our school district because of funds. But if we can provide the services, that would be great. Also, I want to thank Officer Winner. And I don't know if I ever pronounced his last name correctly. Um, he does the the homeless outreach and and I, you should see the way he interacts with our homeless population. And I know for a fact, he didn't, he wasn't interacting this way because I was there. I know for a fact, that's just the way he is, because I have heard from different residents and even the homeless people, they know him by name. And just when he approaches, the way our homeless population is so comfortable talking to him, it is amazing. So he was out there today uh doing the outreach to trying to find more homeless for our tiny homes to see who is interested. Some of our homeless don't know about the tiny homes yet. Some were already aware and had actually, um, and he had actually already reached out to them and filled out applications, and then we would go to other homeless and say, oh, well, I have a friend that mentioned it to me, and why? Because Officer Winner was already contacted one of their friends. So the word is getting out there. There are residents out there that 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 said today that they want the help. They want to be able to get back on their feet to start a new life. Uh, there was this one, the first resident that that we approached today. It was sad because he says, well, you know, I'm getting old and my time is coming up. And I said to him, don't say that. There's always hope. There's, as long as you have hope and as long as you want to move forward, we can do this. And Officer Winner is a good example of the person that you can reach out to. And so he he looked at me, says, yes, you're right. He's a great guy, he tells me. And that's the, that's what I hear from our community members, our our homeless, and we have a lot of Baldwin Park police officers, not just him, but a lot of officers that do that type of work here in our city, that care about our community. We just need to get to know them. And he also shared with me that because now our city police has taken over our school district, that's exactly what they're doing. They're actually going to the schools, introducing themselves to, right now, the office staff. So to let them know who the officer is, that it's on their beat. So the office staff knows who to call, and they feel comfortable. And as soon as the schools start having parent meetings, their goal, and I also shared this with the chief, and he agreed, is to start having parent meetings with them and just let them know what to look for, how to protect their children, what to look for in case they feel they're they're under the influence. But Officer Winner, along with the rest of the Baldwin Park Police Department, is doing an amazing job. They have actually done a great job stepping up and and being part of our of our school district. And even though they're understaffed, they're still reaching out and doing everything possible. So I want to commend the whole police department for the job that they're doing. I know it's not easy because now they're taking a double duty, but like Officer Winner and I said today, they're all the same community. We're all working for the same thing. So thank you, Baldwin Park Police Department. Um, not just our police officers, but all the staff in our police department, because together is what makes this community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, just to piggyback actually on the item that you mentioned uh regarding the music. Um, I was actually in the Bay Area uh last week and um speaking with a colleague up there. Uh, you know, they gave me a a good idea of, you know, I think we could certainly, I would like to, um, you know, amend what you mentioned and also add to that. Um, is for us, for the city, uh, you know, we have a tremendous wrecking parts program. Uh, for us to create a, you know, a city cultura program, um, that offers not only art, music, and dance um as part of a program or a curriculum uh that showcases, you know, the various uh, you know, uh, cultures that we have that's rich in our city, not only from the Latin American, African American, uh, the API communities and all the other uh uh segments of our community. Um, I like for staff to kind of look at that, um, for us to, you know, bring it back so we can run through that for our young adults um as they begin to understand, you know, not only the the culture of their of their family, but also the culture of of their neighbors here in the city. Um, and I hope you'd be uh amenable to, you know, add the music part of it to this, you know, uh, three-pronged approach. Um, and we'll, of course, have staff kind of figure out what that looks like um for us.
Yeah, I, you know what, Councilmember, that's actually a really good idea. And so I always, we always think, I always think back to this one interview I saw on like Channel thirty-four, and they were talking about, um, you know, a lot of people are afraid of that when when we get, you know, uh immigrants into the country, we're afraid that they're going to change our culture. But as generations pass, it's actually, you know, the generations get more and more Americanized. So it would be neat for, you know, our 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 kids and our children in the city to have a have that opportunity to learn about their their roots and also make the city more diverse. I know that when we celebrated um Mexican Independence Day, a lot of people said, what about El Salvador and Guatemala? Because I think they celebrate the same day. So we definitely want to be inclusive. So that's a good point you brought up. Um, and then I did want to let you all know that our service, the Marching Dons, have actually made it to championships, and they will be in San Diego, I believe, this Saturday.
Perfect.
Very nice. So.
Um, if I may, I just have a few more other items. Thank you. Um, I also want to have, uh, you know, instruct staff uh to create a Baldwin Park uh business roundtable. Um, you know, meeting with uh some of our our, you know, uh, our various stakeholders. Um, because we haven't done this in quite some time, and I like to initiate uh this type of process where we're able to check in with them, where we invite them. Uh, now that we're able to kind of gathered, uh, gather, you know, in in reasonable space, uh, to bring together, you know, our various stakeholders um to ask them, you know, what it is that, you know, they're going through and how how we could uh fully be able to support them and help them um as, you know, as a revenue stream for our city, but also as part of our partners uh that we have. So I like to, you know, instruct staff to kind of work on that for us. Um, the other thing, uh, I know Manny and I spoke about, and this is something that's been spoken about in our uh at city council, is I also just want to a a report back at our next council meeting, which I know staff is ready to do um in regards to the lights of our fields, of our, of both of our parks. Um, if they can come back, if staff, Manny, if you can come back with your team, um, as to, you know, what the policy could be or program for us to offer, uh, you know, um, our constituents, um, that don't have the means to rent out uh the parks for extended extended period of times uh to rent, you know, to rent the lights. Um, I think that's something that we can certainly cover uh on our own. So if we could just have that report and a and a draft policy of what that looks like so we could, uh, you know, make 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 good on that, um, promise as soon as possible. Uh, and the last one is, this is for Ben. Ben, uh, as you know, workforce development and youth hiring is a big uh part of me. Um, and, you know, I I'd like for us to, um, again, uh, re-engage and get that, uh, you know, process ready. Um, you know, considering that we have several businesses uh in our local community that that are looking for young adults uh to fill se- several uh positions, um, not so much during the seasonal uh part, because I don't think we have enough time for that. But maybe in the first uh quarter of next year, uh, maybe in January or or early February, um, you know, we can kind of, you know, bring in and re-engage uh all of our partners that we worked with in the past to begin filling some of those spots and helping, uh, you know, filling uh the uh opportunities uh for young employment and first-time employment for our for our young adults. Um, and we can kind of uh somewhat tie that in also when we do the Baldwin Park uh roundtable, uh business roundtable. Um, you know, summit or uh however we want to call it. Um, and we can obviously talk more offline in the details, but uh those are the things we like to do over the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe at this moment, we are ready to uh reconvene in closed session.
Mayor, if I could just really briefly, I just wanted publicly thank our city manager Enrique Saldivar. And there was a police officer also involved. Last meeting, when we walked out to our cars, uh, we were chatting and uh and as he left to his car, I was getting my, putting my stuff in my car. And someone said, hey, do you know what time it is? And I turned around, about eight feet away was a gentleman. It was evident he was on some sort of uh something. And he startled me, and uh the city manager immediately jumped out of his car, ran over, and told the gentleman, it's time for you to go home. And the officer stood in front of the elders, I'm not sure if it was you, the the officer stood in front of the elevators and waited until this individual left. And I got in my car, and I was really shook by it, and I just appreciate the the heroism that was shown by the two of you, and I thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It was actually Chief Lopez, who was standing by the elevator. Yes?
He startled, he startled me because he was just eight feet away. I I didn't see him coming. I, he just was there. And uh it really startled me. I'm usually really good and not not scared easily, and that that really scared me. But Enrique came to the rescue, and the officer that was there by the elevators did not leave until this gentleman exited the building. So thank you.
Really good to hear, and it and it comes to show what two gems we have, huh? So, yeah, good work, guys. Thank you. So at this moment, we will reconvene in closed session.
Thank you, everyone.